Good afternoon, welcome to the May 3rd Phoenix City Council formal meeting. We'll begin today's meeting with an invocation, I'll welcome Police Chaplain Robert Fezmeier.
You're welcome to join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, Author and Creator of life, we thank you for today and the opportunity to live and work for something greater than ourselves. I thank you for leaders entrusted with authority to be the difference and make a difference in the lives of others, to act justly, love mercy and walk humbly. Hold us to our promises, protect us from our weaknesses, expose deception and reward righteousness. Thank you for our frontline protectors, our upfront leaders and the behind the scenes workers that make this city a great place to live and work. May you unify us and strengthen us in the fight for good. And we thank you for the preservation of life on our officer who was brutally attacked this week and for his family and for his full recovery. We pray this in your holy name, amen.
Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge... Thank you. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Wardado?
Here.
Councilwoman Hodge Washington?
Here.
Councilwoman O'Brien?
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor? Councilman Robinson?
Here.
Councilwoman Stark?
Here.
Councilman Waring?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ansari?
Here.
Mayor Gallego?
Here.
Thank you for joining us today. We have Carmen Cota and Elsie Duarte here to provide interpretation. Would you introduce yourselves?
Yes, thank you Mayor. Hello, my name is Elsie Duarte and together with my colleague Carmen Cota, we will be serving as Spanish interpreters for today's City Council formal meeting. I will now take a moment to introduce ourselves to our Spanish speaking audience and review some guidelines. Buenas tardes, bienvenidos a la reunión formal del Consejo Municipal. Mi nombre es Elsie Duarte y junto con mi colega Carmen Cota estaremos sirviéndoles hoy como intérpretes a nuestra audiencia de habla hispana. Decíamos pedirle de antemano si va a dar un comentario público, por favor hable despacio, con claridad y evite tener distracciones de fondo. Finalmente pause cada una o dos oraciones para poder interpretarle de la manera más completa posible. Gracias. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you so much. Will the City Clerk please read the 24 hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances numbered G-7082 and 7105 through 7111, S-49633 and 49700 and resolutions 22115 through 22122.
Thank you. Will the City Attorney please explain the role of public comment?
Yes, thank you Mayor. Members of the public may speak for up to two minutes to comment on agenda items. Comments must be related to the agenda item and the action being considered by the council. General comments that go beyond the scope of the agenda item must be made in the citizen comment session at the end of the agenda. The City Council and staff cannot discuss or comment on matters related to pending investigations, claims or litigation. The City Code requires speakers to present their comments in a respectful and courteous manner. Profane language, threats or personal attacks on members of the public, council members or staff are not allowed. A person who violates these rules will lose the opportunity to continue to speak.
Thank you so much. We have a busy meeting today with up to 2,370 units of housing for potential improvement, investments in our City of Phoenix employees, housing homelessness, sustainability and so much more, including the Thelma Williams Transit Center. We begin today with Boards and Commissions, item one. We have a great group of individuals who will advise the city and help us develop policies and implement programs. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Mayor and City Council Boards and Commissions nominations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Passes unanimously. We will now swear in this very important group of individuals. Please raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
...that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
...and defend them against all enemies...
And defend them against all enemies.
...foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
...and that I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially.
...discharge the duties of the office of...
Discharge the duties of the office of...
State. According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God. Congratulations, thank you for serving our city. We are so glad to help you, please go behind. Thank you so much for your service to our city. We appreciate you stepping forward. The City Council provides an advisory role with liquor licenses to the State of Arizona and we turn to that portion of our agenda next. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve items 2 through 23 noting that item 12 is as revised and item 23 is withdrawn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Passes unanimously. City Clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolutions, new business and planning and zoning?
Yes Mayor.
Motion to approve items 24 through 130 except the following: items 43, 45, 46, 75, 76, 79, 89, 96, 97, 124, 125, 126, 127, 128 and 129 noting that items 86, item 86 is as revised and excluding these items for virtual public comment, item 128. And can the Clerk confirm if there are any other items that should be excluded for in-person public comment?
Yes Mayor, also excluding 47, 63, 65, 73, 81, 82 and 121. I will repeat, also excluding items 47, 63, 65, 73, 81, 82 and 121.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or corrections? Roll call.
Wardado?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Ansari?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you so much. Among the items we just passed were some significant investments in employee compensation and thanks to our city employee partners who worked towards that, we want to be a great employer. We next move to item 43, special bond election, ordering of such election. Vice Mayor.
Move to approve item 43.
Second.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, just a couple of comments, I just wanted to say how excited I am for this. This bond will be a major and transformative, exciting investment in communities throughout Phoenix and I want to thank all of the committee members who spent countless hours working diligently to filter through these projects, approve these projects and of course to the residents who took time out of their days to come advocate and vocalize what they wanted to see the city spend money on. If this bond is approved by voters, Estrella will receive a much awaited regional park and branch library that they have been waiting for for decades. The recently opened Caesar Chavez Community Center will get an onsite senior center and across District 7 we will see investments in safer streets, maintenance projects and expanded city services like much needed new fire stations throughout the city. So I'm thrilled and excited to vote for all of the bond questions this November and I encourage District 7 residents to turn out and vote as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I want to thank our amazing bond committee who looked at so many needs in America's fastest growing city and put forward a balanced package that includes arts and culture, public safety, investment in infrastructure and maintenance of cities' facilities. Councilwoman Hodge Washington?
Thank you Mayor. I also join my colleagues in thanking the committee members for their support and your dedication in providing the projects and programs that are going to benefit our city. I wanted to also highlight some of those that will be specifically important to me in District 8 and that includes for example our Choice Neighborhood Housing Development gap funding. If passes, we will spend $21 million in District 8 to help meet our housing needs and in this day and age, I think we all can agree that that is a great priority for our city. We also would be seeing additional investments in our senior centers as well, as well as seeing more investments in the expansion of the Phoenix Centers for, I'm sorry, Children's Museum of Phoenix will be expanding that as well. So in addition to the other great projects, I just wanted to say thank you to the committee members for all of your hard work and I look forward to also seeing the passage of the bond program.
Thank you. Roll call.
Wardado?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
I'm excited for all of it, so yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Ansari?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
We next move to item 45 which is an agreement with Maricopa County Community College District for the Women's Forum. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I have a conflict with that.
Noting that Councilwoman Pastor will not be participating in this vote, do we have a motion?
Move to approve item 45.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Wardado?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Ansari?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Item 46 is Council Redistricting Services Contract RFP Request for Award. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve item 46.
Second.
We'll go first to Councilman Waring for comments and then Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you Mayor. So I didn't see it in the packet, but I know I've discussed it with staff. I think this is a four-year obligation for the company that gets it. Is that correct?
Mayor, Members of the Council, Councilman Waring, this particular contract is for one year with the option to extend for four years, one-year options to extend.
Okay, so if things aren't wrapped up, we can extend. And one thing I'd like to discuss extending but wouldn't expect it to be done in time for this next election cycle is increasing the number of districts, which I believe I'm correct, would have to then be sent to voters. So I guess just to lay it out, our districts are big and getting bigger by the day. Obviously Phoenix is one of the fastest growing cities, Maricopa one of the fastest growing counties, that's not new news, but our districts are ginormous compared to other cities. Even large cities, there's nowhere close to it, there is a chart online for those who are interested that will show, you know, our districts are bigger than really probably most American cities. So I think I've seen it that our districts are bigger than all but five or six cities in Arizona. And at some point, you know, our campaigns now are turning into million dollar affairs and part of that is related to the size and the cost of our media market, you know, here in Phoenix. So I would suggest that we go ahead and do this redistricting, but that sometime in 2030 or before, we come up, I guess it would be this company probably on a contract extension, would also draw new lines that we could subsequently submit to voters at a time that makes sense to all of us, you know, try to limit midterm, so when people are termed and so forth, that might make sense. And get it done by 2030. The reason I selected 2030 is because if we don't do it by 2030, then it's 2032 and we're starting this process all over again, but now we have 300,000 person districts or whatever it'll be and gonna be, you know, our successors, because we'll all be gone with term limits and etc., you know, well, that'll be it, you know, they're gonna be starting over from scratch. So I just think it's worth having the discussion. My colleagues disagree, I respect the opinion, but it is something I'd like to see included as a potential part of this contract or depending on how that would work, I guess, an extension like you're talking about of extending it four years. So I hope that made sense and please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Stark?
Thank you Mayor. Actually Jim stole my thunder. I also think that we need to look at additional districts. Our local government impacts everyone's everyday life and I think it's critical that our constituents have a good relationship with their council person. I would agree with Jim, we have grown so large, it is sometimes difficult to manage all the wants, desires, questions, emails, phone calls that we get from our constituents and I think we owe it to the residents and the businesses in the City of Phoenix to have great representation. So I like the way Jim is going, I would agree and hopefully we can use his consultant to look at some additional districts as well. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Waring?
Oh, thank you Mayor, I appreciate it. It's just for frame of reference, you know, people are always shocked, when I go up to the northwest corner of my district, which is at basically Carefree Highway, goes a little north of that some places, but basically Carefree Highway and I-17, when I tell them where I live, because it seems like the other end of the world to them, because the district I represent goes down all the way to the Paradise Valley border. It goes up Scottsdale Road to Carefree Highway and then across to I-17 and then back down. That's a big geographic footprint, we have a lot of state trust land in the middle of it, so it's more spread out than some of the other districts. I think we have, last I checked, I think it's 740 miles of streets just in this district and District 2 and I would just suggest that breaking that up some, in my head, I thought doubling the number of districts sounded like too much, but maybe four more for a total of 12 for a council of 13 didn't seem unreasonable. And then you might be bringing down the number of people in the districts to, you know, 150,000 or something like that as opposed to, you know, getting over 200,000 now. The district system was set up in the early 80s, so you know, it's been 40 years of really pretty steady massive growth and I just think if we don't do this now, I mean, our districts are already like pretty decent sized cities. Our districts, I think, are way bigger than Tempe for example. So cities that you care of on a daily basis, our districts are quite a bit bigger and in some cases like mine, the geographic footprint is quite a bit bigger. So it's just something to think about. I would like to include this to at least have the discussion, I'm not wedded to adding four districts, I'm not really wedded to anything other than the idea that I think our districts are getting pretty big. It's making it pretty challenging for someone starting from scratch to be able to run without some kind of help because, you know, you gotta reach so many voters, so it's gonna be really expensive. So just, those are my parting thoughts Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Jason Henley is here to comment. Henley?
Mayor, Council. I just, oh, Jason Henley, I am the president of ASME 2384. I would like to ask that we have a voice in this redistricting, I don't know how this looks, this would be my first time in a redistricting situation, so I would ask that us as the unit, since there's 14,000 of us, you know, roughly, that this redistricting impacts greatly, I would like to ask that we have a seat, you know, in the discussions going on forward in this along with the residents. I don't know what this looks like, but you know, we're approving half a million dollars for some company to come in and really we know what goes on here probably as well or better than most people. So I am gonna ask that you consider that we have a voice at the table. Thank you.
Thank you and we would encourage, there'll be a series of public meetings which we'd encourage community members to participate in as well as everyone is welcome to meet with their council members, mayors and stakeholders. All right, roll call.
Wardado?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just had a quick question, do we need to make an amendment to pursue looking at additional council seats or is that just a given as we go through the process?
Mayor, Members of the Council, Councilwoman Stark, that can be part of the discussion, it is not necessary, we did get your input today, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for the clarification. Thank you Mayor.
Wardado?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Ansari?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
We next go to item 47 which is the sale of airport owned land. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve item 47.
Second.
We do have two members of the public to address the audience, we'll begin with Jay Woodfin Thomas followed by Margaret Baker.
Thank you Mayor and Council for your time and I did want to clarify that I'm not a resident of Phoenix, but I'm the former mayor of Litchfield Park and I've been involved with working to keep Luke Air Force Base viable for many years. And that goes back to the passage of Senate Bill 1525 in 2001. And in that, we wanted to make sure we had compatible land use around Luke Air Force Base and we're successful in accomplishing that. Then at that time, well, in 2005, the City of Phoenix put a resolution on the table that further supported the protection of Luke with a particular compatible land use called agriculture. We've, and I've got documents to submit to you that we submitted to the State Historic Preservation Officer last Friday to look for a historic designation in the federal register for the Bunstead property also known as Talwiwi Ranch. This has had some very significant agricultural influences over the years. I would also like to thank the Department of Aviation that has been meeting with us and giving a better understanding of the city's plans. My understanding is the designation of a historic property would not necessarily impact any value of the property, but it would allow a future property owner the option of utilizing that for a conservation easement. There's been several granted throughout the state for historic purposes as well. Some of the values that we're seeing in the West Valley are really, in my mind, astronomical. I'm a certified general real estate appraiser and I look at the total value, the one that I just checked, it was over 80% of the value of the property was in the development rights. These conservation easements will pay the farm or the owner the difference between the sub-value and the development price. And again, as much as 80%. Half of it is cash by the USDA and the other half is by tax credits. Thank you for your time. We're looking for a continuance to let the shipo make a decision on this property which will be at their July meeting.
Thank you. Margaret will be our final speaker.
Yes, she only was willing to speak if needed.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
But again, here's the application for the historic preservation and more, I don't expect you to know what that is now, but that's to show how serious we've been on this. It was in the paper in January that the property was being sold and our understanding with the protections that were in place that it was gonna be that way, so here we are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I understand this is just the first step in the process, so this is not, this is to list, but not to complete the transaction. All right.
Can we have somebody from the Aviation Department?
There is our Aviation Director.
Thank you Mayor.
Councilwoman O'Brien?
Thank you Chad for joining us. Can you tell us about this process and what this item means today?
Thank you Mayor, Councilmember O'Brien. The Aviation Department back in about 1998 entered into a three-way land swap with the city surprise and a private landowner to assemble property adjacent to Luke Air Force Base. The sole goal was to actually ensure that we had a buffer to protect Luke Air Force Base from encroachment. And so through that process, we were able to do that. Since that time, the State of Arizona passed ARS 28-8481 which through the Arizona Revised Statutes, that incorporates what's called accident protection zones off of the end of the runways and that has created the support for Luke Air Force Base to continue to operate without that threat of encroachment. So the Aviation Department's interest in owning that land no longer exists and what we've seen is at the time that we acquired that land, it was valued at about $8 million and this is about 900 acres of property. Based on recent comps that we've seen, that same land is valued at close to $400 million. And so we really see the opportunity now to capitalize on the market opportunity to dispose of a portion of that land. We're actually proposing today to dispose of about half of that land, about 450 acres and we would use that land or that money that we would bring in from that land to actually further develop our airport through our capital development program.
Does approving this item today mean that it's just going to be sold? I mean, there's not a contract in place, so help me...
Mayor, Councilwoman O'Brien, what we're asking for today is authorization to dispose of 450 acres through the use of a broker. We'll use the city's contracted broker to do so. I have made a commitment to the Litchfield Park Historical Society that we would take this, once we identify who a suitable landowner could be and we make that sale or that transaction, we would bring that back to this council for a second opportunity to review and approve that item before we had actually disposed of the property. We also have committed over the next couple of months as we do this to work closely with the team at the Litchfield Park Historical Society to see what we can do to resolve any questions or concerns that they might have.
Excellent, so if you find a buyer, you'll work with them and you will bring it back to the City Council for a final approval that it is of good use and works for all the parties.
Mayor, Councilmember, that's correct.
Thank you so much Chad. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you. Roll call.
Wardado?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
union brothers and sisters, the weekend would be considered still a radical idea, and forty-hour work weeks would just be a dream in this greedy age of corporations running the show. So I strongly hope you will vote for them. The union people are good people, and they work for all of us. Please don't believe the propaganda otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. I look forward to supporting this item to make sure we are a competitive employer and invest in employers, employees. Roll call.
Wardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Sixty-five is an MOU with our firefighters. Vice Mayor.
Move to approve item sixty-five.
Second.
Leonard Clark.
Thank you. I hope you'll vote for this. The firefighters, ever since I was a child, I admired them, and they have undergone a lot. They breathe in chemicals that cause cancer. State legislature had, they had to go to the state legislature to fight for their rights to not be cut off of medical life-saving insurance. So I strongly urge you to vote for the IAFF memorandum. The firefighters are there for us always, twenty-four seven, and I want to thank them personally. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Wardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Sixty-five is an MOU with our firefighters. Vice Mayor.
Move to approve item seventy-three.
Second.
And for our city clerk, was there a public comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor. We have Leonard Clark.
Leonard.
Thank you, Mayor. This emergency measure to help in the city of Phoenix, fifth-largest city in the United States of America, to stop more people from dying from dehydration and the heat is extremely important. I want to thank Maricopa County. I'm sure you know, but I think it's either the largest county, right up there with Cook County in Illinois, for working with us in this day and age when more and more of our youngsters and older people are being evicted due to no rent control in this state. We really need to make sure more people don't die, so I hope you'll approve this so we can have these cooling-off stations. And we've got to think of all the people right now who don't have homes, and the number is increasing. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Wardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Item seventy-five is related to a contract with Teen Lifeline, and I will turn to Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes, I would like to make the motion to authorize to enter and contract with Teen Lifeline.
Second.
And I'll turn to the Councilwoman for comments.
Yes, this contract is very exciting. This goes back to, let me see how old I am, about thirty years ago, when I was introduced to Teen Lifeline and had many friends that actually participated in Teen Lifeline in helping young teens that are in critical, in a state of mind of possibly wanting to commit suicide or any type of connection or wanting help. So I'm excited that we were able to work with Teen Lifeline to provide some funding for the city of Phoenix. This is the first time the city of Phoenix has provided funding for Teen Lifeline, and other cities have been providing. So I want to save lives and young lives and be able to get, connect them to the resources or services that they will need, and their families. So thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Wardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Item seventy-nine is the Office of Heat Response and Mitigation, Heat Relief Grant Program. Vice Mayor.
Move to approve item seventy-nine.
Second.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I'm very excited about this item. This past weekend, Phoenix had its first a hundred-degree day of the season. I'm sure everyone felt that. And last year, we saw four hundred and twenty-four heat-related deaths, the highest number since reporting began. These are devastating numbers, and they're also preventable numbers. But with over a thousand unsheltered residents living throughout our city, we know that that number could be just as high, if not higher, if we don't take critical action. And these grants are a part of that. Last year, I worked with the city manager's office and the Office of Heat Response and Mitigation to secure about six hundred thousand dollars in ARPA funding for heat relief grants for smaller nonprofits and on-the-ground organizations to be able to distribute critical heat relief. And until we have enough housing built and enough shelter, I think this will be a consistent need every single summer. ARPA money will not last forever, so I encourage city staff to make certain that these grant opportunities are worked into the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five budget. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's timely to be doing this during Heat Awareness Week. We appreciate all the city departments that are working to keep our residents safe during our very hot summers. Extreme heat is a fact of life for us in Phoenix, but we have to do more to make sure we protect our community members. And this program will complement several other ongoing programs, including work to bring unsheltered residents indoors and our Cool Corridors program. Roll call.
Wardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Item eighty-one is the twenty-three twenty-four Housing and Urban Development Consolidated Plan Annual Action Plan.
Move to approve item eighty-one.
Second.
Diane Barker.
Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego, City Councils, in salute to our new council members. My name's Diane Barker, and I'm in District Seven, and I'm interested in having you pass this. It's very timely, the HUD monies, there's twenty-eight million dollars here that you're asking for in the Community Action Plan. And what is that? Is the federal government requires you in giving monies to low-income for not only apartments, but housing homelessness, that you have a plan? And it was passed in March. I've read some parts of it, and having been in the city for several decades and familiar with this and what it can do. And in this, there's over a million dollars that you can add to on the problem where you're having to relocate the homeless that are down the street. So I'd say, get right onto this. And, Mayor, is it okay if I go on eighty-two, or do you need to call then?
Go ahead with eighty-two.
Okay. On eighty-two is the Neighborhood Services, and they're looking for the money to activate, not only to investigate properties so we don't have lead poisoning effect, pregnant women and children especially. I thought that problem was pretty much its housing before seventy-five, that that was, that lead paint was out. But apparently, we still have that problem. The other thing I really want to emphasize, and thank you, Mayor, for talking about, we need water, is when we build these communities of low income, I'd like to see it different places of the valley, near a bust-up, shelter that bust-up, and make it so that it is near services of a library. I see in the future, the libraries may even replace some education facilities. This, we, Burton Bar is fantastic for comprehensive, build a business, go to a seminar, get on a computer, and we need more of that. Thank you.
Thank you. So item eighty-one, the HUD Annual Action Plan, which does do a variety of important investments in housing and fighting homelessness. Roll call.
Wardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Item eighty-two is Neighborhood Services Department Housing Rehabilitation Programs. Vice Mayor.
Move to approve item eighty-two.
Second.
And Diane was our only comment, so roll call.
Wardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Item eighty-two is Neighborhood Services Department Housing Rehabilitation Programs.
Vice Mayor.
Move to approve item eighty-two.
Second.
And Diane was our only comment, so roll call.
Wardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Item eighty-two is Neighborhood Services Department Housing Rehabilitation Programs. Vice Mayor.
Move to approve item eighty-two.
Second.
And Diane was our only comment, so roll call.
Wardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Nine zero. I think I see another nine zero coming with eighty-nine, which is authorization to amend the ordinance for the Hickey Family Foundation grant. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve item eighty-nine.
Second.
We will turn to our council lead on our human trafficking efforts, Councilman Waring.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope you're right about the nine to nothing, and I can't emphasize enough how much the Hickey Family Foundation has done to support the city's efforts. I know how much it means to the officers. I don't want to presume to speak for them, but a lot of the work that is done combating human trafficking, which again, you know, I think quite, a lot of the members, but of the council for sure, but maybe some members of the audience are already familiar with this, but, you know, a lot of these victims are underage. It is just an abhorrent crime. I don't know what we do without our police department combating it, but I don't know what the police department would do without the Hickey Foundation family's, family's support. Nancy Baldwin has been our committee from the outset. She's always been just a terrific advocate, and I just wanted to highlight that, so I'll stop there, Mayor, but I just can't emphasize enough to the rest of the council members how valuable this is. Thank you.
Thank you. And I can add that the Hickey Foundation has been very, very involved with both support directly for our officers, as well as making good public policy and supporting innovations, including Starfish Place, which provides high-quality housing to victims of human trafficking. Our heat task force has made significant inroads in rescuing and protecting victims of trafficking, and this shows appreciation to them. Roll call.
Wardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
You got your nine zero, Waring.
And thank you, Councilmen, for your continued work on this important issue. Item ninety-six is our request to submit the annual FTA grant applications.
Move to approve item ninety-six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is an important item that helps make sure we get our fair share of tax dollars for our region, and it looks like we are looking at a hundred and fifty-three million in these grant funds in this application. Roll call.
Wardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight one.
Item ninety-seven is the naming of the Metro Center Transit Center for Thelda Williams. Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you, Mayor. I am honored to make the motion for item ninety-seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll turn first to Councilwoman Stark for comments, followed by Councilwoman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. This really is a great honor for a great leader. I had the privilege of serving with Thelda on the council, but even before that, I knew her when I was the planning director. And I can tell you, she is probably one of the best champions when it comes to good transportation planning, especially in the area of light rail. I can't think of anyone that's more deserving of this recognition, and I applaud that And I applaud that we're doing it. I know other fellow council members who are part of this. I thank them for that. And let's continue to honor Thelda Williams in a way that she deserves. And that's recognizing her for light rail. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm excited to support this item, to name the Metro Center Transit Center after my predecessor, Councilwoman, and three-time Mayor Thelda Williams. Thelda has been an institution for decades in the city of Phoenix, having served as the city's second female mayor and the only person in Phoenix history to have served as mayor three times. She accomplished these achievements by working closely with the many members of council who served with her and by putting the needs of the city over politics. She left a lasting legacy of working to get things done for the citizens of Phoenix, and I hope to continue her legacy. Councilwoman Williams was a municipal mentor of mine throughout my years of being active and engaged in the community and while I served on the Deer Valley School Board. She's one of the first calls I made when I was thinking about running to replace her seat. And over the last two years, she left some big shoes to fill. And I can only hope that my time on council, however long that may be, I get to accomplish half of what Thelda was able to achieve. I look forward to celebrating fully when construction on the Transit Center is completed and we get to see in big letters, "Thelda Williams Transit Center." Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll go next to Councilwoman Waring and then Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor. I served as Mayor Williams' Vice Mayor and really enjoyed every second of it. I thought we got a lot of good work done. I don't know if Thelda's listening. I've already sort of told her this in the past. But if I hadn't made it clear to others, I thought she did a great job under trying circumstances. Honestly, it was some of my favorite times in public service. And only naming something after Thelda Williams could get me to vote for something light rail-related. So, well done, Thelda, and congratulations.
This is a big day. Councilwoman Pastor.
It's an exciting day because Waring's going to be voting for this. And I'm glad it's under Thelda Williams. What I have to say, and Waring will understand this, Thelda taught me the number five. She had me figure out that I needed five votes in order to pass something. Thelda also watched me evolve in my career because I knew her as a young child as I was growing up the system. And she also, her and I, served on a homeless task force. That was my first task when I moved back to Phoenix. And her and I sat together and worked on some, back then, major problems. But we have now, we see today as we evolve, we have crisis problems. But she was at the forefront of that. And so she has always, we may not have met eye to eye on certain things, but we were respectful to one another. And we honored our points of view. And so I cherish Thelda for that. I happened to be the Chair of Valley Metro when this came up. And I was like, yes, let's do this. So I get to vote twice on the naming of Thelda Williams. Congratulations, Thelda. I hope you're watching and hope you're at your best at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Guardado.
My time with Councilwoman Thelda Williams wasn't very long, but we got to work on a lot of great projects together. During the pandemic, we were able to ensure great things at the airport, making sure that we took care of the airport. And we were also able to take care of the workers. So in honor of her and her legacy when it came to everything that had to do with the airport, with transportation, I'm just hopeful that we will continue to thrive and that we continue to push and drive to making sure that we bring in more light rail lines into the city of Phoenix and making sure that we continue to expand on our light rail and transportation, just in honor of her and her legacy and of all the work that's been done already. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I too look forward to supporting this item. The Metro Center Line was one of Councilwoman Williams' legacy projects. She worked very hard to make sure that we engage with the community, that we moved forward with funding this project. And when the funding was at risk, she worked hard to protect it. She really got into the details of the corridor and how it would work and worked hard to pave the groundwork for the Metro Center redevelopment, which Councilwoman O'Brien is doing a great job spearheading and moving forward. That will be, continue to be a gem for the city of Phoenix. It will be wonderful to drive by this Transit Center and see the name Thelda Williams. Councilman Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I will echo, I echo all the sentiments that everyone has said about Councilwoman Williams. But from my perspective, I had an opportunity to work with her as a precinct commander when I was at Cactus Park Precinct. And I don't know that there was ever a councilperson who was more concerned about the constituents in her area than Thelda. You know, it was always a pleasure working with her. And as a police precinct commander, you know, you dealt with a variety of issues. And she was always there. So this is an honor that she is truly deserving of. And like I said, I echo what everybody has said. It's, I'm very happy for her and her entire family. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
I will take also a moment or two to congratulate Councilwoman and former Mayor Thelda Williams for her, for this honor, I think. Having served, if anything else, as three times the mayor of this great city, this is the least we can do to honor her accomplishments. So congratulations again.
Thank you. Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Hundred percent, yes.
Waring.
Mayor, permission to briefly explain my vote?
Please do. Yeah, yeah, explain it.
Marcus, you finally got me on one. Congratulations, Thelda. I vote yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Councilwoman Waring, I will report a large smile from Marcus Coleman, City of Phoenix Light Rail Administrator. It's a great day.
All right. Well, he had to enlist Thelda to get that, but still.
We next go to Item 121, which is the southwest corner of 39th Avenue and Camelback Road in District 5. Councilwoman Guardado.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We do have one member of the public to testify. Christina Tyler.
Hi. So the reason why I came here to speak today on this issue is because it is right next to my apartment complex. And if you guys remember, I had contacted you guys a few months ago because the cats in my apartment complex were being shot at. And there was BB bullets sticking out of their head. And they were also being kicked. And they were being murdered. And so the thing is, is the majority of those cats had actually lived on the property in which you guys tore down. And so the thing is, is that they would walk from that property onto the apartment complex and to be able to get food. That property had provided the majority of the shade and shelter for these feral cats, as well as provided the majority of the water as well, since the apartment complex would dump water bowls. And they would not allow TNR, which violates state statutes as well, on the apartment complex. So what I would like to ask of the city of Phoenix is to be in compliance with the Arizona state statutes to provide medically necessary treatment for these cats. And also, we do, I have had this entire time, rescue organization that has been helping with both the treatment of the cats and also getting these cats into barn, into different barns. So that way, they are not being shot at or murdered or anything like that. So I'd like the city of Phoenix to please help aid now with the rescue of these cats. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Can I just say, my staff is in the back. Andrew, if you can wave. And you could definitely connect with him. And we can see what we can do to help. Thank you.
Thank you. We ready for roll call? Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
We'll next take Items 124 and 125 together. They are companion cases related to the southwest corner of 22nd Avenue and Dunlap Avenue. We will open the public hearing. We do not have any members of the public to testify, so we will close the public hearing. I will turn to Councilwoman Guardado for first a motion on 124.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve, per the Planning Commission recommendation, and adopt the related resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Item 125.
Motion to approve, per the Planning Commission recommendation, and adopt the related ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
We will next go to 126 and 127, which are in the neighborhood of 99th Avenue and Lower Buckeye Road. Open the public hearing. We do not have any members of the public to testify. Close the public hearing. I'll turn to the Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve, per the Planning Commission recommendation, and adopt the related resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
127.
Motion to approve, per the Planning Commission recommendation.
Second.
Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
We next go to 128 and 129, which are both related to the southeast corner of 59th Avenue and Elliott Road. We'll open the public hearing. We have one member of the public to testify. And this is a joint hearing for 128 and 129. Michael Norton, the floor is yours.
Mayor, Michael's not online.
Close the public hearing. Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
I move that we approve, per the Planning Commission recommendation, and adopt the related resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional comments? Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
129. Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
I move that we approve for the May 3, 2023 memo from the Planning and Development Director and adopt the related ordinance.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. I'll next turn to our city attorney to introduce resident citizen comment portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mayor, this item is a petition from Kim Baker. Oh, I'm sorry. Apologies, Mayor. I thought we were on Item 95. During citizen comment, members of the public may address the city council for up to three minutes on issues of interest or concern to them. The city comment session is limited to 30 minutes. The Arizona Open Meeting Law permits the city council to listen to the comments but prohibits council members from discussing or acting on the matters presented.
And one of my councilwomen asked to clarify. So the screen said we approved 130 in the omnibus. Is that staff?
Yes, Mayor. It was approved as staff recommended in the omnibus.
Okay. So then we will go to citizen comment. And we'll start with Kim Baker, followed by Leonard Clark.
Hello, hello to the council. I have a citizen petition before the council today for considering. I got a call from Detective Collins on 4/24, I think it was, early in the morning. My thoughts were not thinking, but I listened to him explain his situation or the position that he was taking. The open law complaint that it's been considered now was not, it was not given the attention that it deserved.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
One twenty-nine. Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
I move that we approve for the May third, twenty-twenty-three memo from the Planning and Development Director and adopt the related ordinance.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
One twenty-nine. Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
I move that we approve for the May third, twenty-twenty-three memo from the Planning and Development Director and adopt the related ordinance.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
We next go to one twenty-six and one twenty-seven, which are in the neighborhood of Ninety-Ninth Avenue and Lower Buckeye Road. Open the public hearing. We do not have any members of the public to testify. Close the public hearing. I'll turn to the Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve per the Planning Commission recommendation and adopt the related resolution. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional comments? Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
One twenty-nine. Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
I move that we approve for the May third, twenty-twenty-three memo from the Planning and Development Director and adopt the related ordinance.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
One twenty-nine. Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
I move that we approve for the May third, twenty-twenty-three memo from the Planning and Development Director and adopt the related ordinance.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.